It is now five thirty. I would like to call the special planning commission meeting on Thursday, July sixth, twenty twenty-three to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God.
Clark, can I please get a roll call?
Commissioner Korea?
Yes.
Commissioner DeBries? Commissioner Maderos?
Yes.
Chair Aranda?
Here. All right, and moving on to agenda number, I action or item number two, action items. A comprehensive economic development strategy, CDS, for the period of twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-seven. Staff.
Just a a brief staff report. The we have the San Benito County Economic Development Corporation staff are here. Renee Wells and Amy Paris, and then we have Steve Wallstrom and Marie Jones here from the consulting team. Today to help us go through the SEDS. Draft, which is a public review draft at this point, comment period ends on the fifteenth. End of July, so we have plenty of time. To get any kind of review recommendations to city council. Which we're intending to do, pass along any of your thoughts and any of the thoughts that we may hear today. To the city council on the eighteenth, so. That'll be a quick turnaround for me, but. Doable, totally, so. This is a five-year strategies indicated in the staff report, and it's the basis for. Jurisdictions in San Benito County to see funding for projects. It's a project oriented. Program this time around. Steve and Marie can go through that with you so that that's well understood. In the strategy that we have, there are two initiatives referenced for San Juan Batista, and in the staff report. There are some recommendations bulleted under the recommendation on page two and three. Of the staff report regarding other things that the city might want to think about. That we have heard as we've had conversations about this. And so today, the consulting team will give a presentation. I've asked them to be, you know, relatively thorough about what's in the SEDS so that we all understand the basis for. The study and also the recommendations that are in there. So and then afterwards, for people that are on Zoom and for people that are here in the room. We can have comments, suggestions regarding things that people. Think that the SEDS program should represent for the city. And then, you know, we're obviously comments can't be very expansive, so just on a limited basis, what. People can summarize their thoughts for for the SEDS. So with that, I'd like to introduce the consulting team and just say, welcome and. Take it away.
Thank you, Brian. Will do. We're really pleased to be here tonight. Can't see all the Zoom people yet, but I assume at one point, they'll come on, and. We've been at this for a year. And I think what we want to do most is to accomplish two things. One is make sure everyone understands. The economic base that. Is filled with myths. And we've kind of uncovered some of these myths. And provides a little direction as to what is realistically was really going on here from an economic development standpoint. And secondly, we have these project initiatives. And these initiatives aren't our initiatives. We didn't create them. What we really done is uncover. What is being proposed throughout the county, the various initiatives that are in the works, moving along. And when what we wanted to do is to understand exactly what they are. What status they were at, whether or not there's funding. What it takes to implement these initiatives so that there's an understanding of where we are with these things. So we'll get to that toward the back end of this. So I'd like to turn this over to Marie, who is going to introduce and describe what the SEDS is. And describe the economic base of San Benito County.
Hey, planning commissioners, nice to meet you. I am also a planning commissioner for a rural community of Mendocino County, so. I know how it is to sit up on that chair. Yep. I had a planning commission meeting this morning at eight o'clock. I like your time better, so this is our agenda real quick, and I'm just gonna walk us through a little bit about what. A SEDS is and what it does for a community. Really, the idea here is to bring together. What your local initiatives are to document them in a report, and that is an avenue for your community to apply for funding from a variety of federal sources. So it's kind of like a ticket to play, but it's not a guarantee that you'll get the funding. You actually have to apply for it to get to it. But in order to pull this together, we we worked with nonprofit, the business community. Local government such as yourself, and then obviously the Economic Development Administration is a key player in this. And these are some of the sources of revenue that you can access. So the American Rescue Plan, the Inflation Reduction Act, Infrastructure Bill. Planning and Technical Assistance, which is always available from EDA and future appropriations. And that funding travels to counties and cities in the form of either grants or loans or combination of the two. So, for example, you can find a newer new sewer treatment system, you can find a new water treatment system. Anything that has to do with economic development, this is what this funding is out there for you. And a lot of communities don't take advantage of it because they don't go through the SEDS process or they're not aware of it. The county of Mendocino, for example, didn't take advantage of it for a long time. In the last three years, we've gotten over eight million dollars. From the EDA for various projects, just because the county woke up to it. It's like, oh, here's this resource, let's go for it. So a SEDS has a certain formula that we have to follow, so. And all of these elements that you see on the PowerPoint are in the form are in the SEDS. So we have to identify the strengths and weaknesses, do an economic analysis, come up with a vision statement. And then do these the resiliency strategy and identify your economic development strategies. So let's start with some weaknesses and strengths, you know, SWAT strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, threats. We've all been there before. So if you look at these strengths, I'm sure they'll all ring true for you. I mean, you drive down here and you can just see the great soils. We can feel the really nice climate. Obviously, San San Juan Batista has great visitor attractions. And then you have a lot of natural resources. You do have a lot of strong local employers. Your airport is unique. Because of the through the gate mechanism that you have there, strategic location near San Jose. And then lots of developable land, which some communities don't have, some weaknesses. I'm sure you're also aware of. Waste water treatment is a big one. The PG&E power substation, are you aware of that as an issue? Yep. Overcapacity on some highways, a lack of access to higher education institutions, although that's gonna start to change a little bit. High housing costs. So I think probably none of these are a huge surprise. And then opportunities, a lot of solar power here in the form of the sun rays that you can start to think about expanding into solving some of the energy issues here. Focusing on existing businesses and helping them to expand rather than attracting new businesses. Smart growth was a real initiative that came out of our conversations with the community, wanting to focus development into areas that are already developed. Looking for ways to expand transportation modes, connecting youth to the workforce, obviously super important for. All of our communities. And then in terms of threats, I think everybody knows about the earthquake issue here. We do have some issues with some infrastructure, which is great, because that's one of the things you can really use EDA funding to tackle. And then obviously, the closing of the hospital is a big challenge, both for employers and residents, and even for future economic development activities. There is a tension in the community between sort of the pro-development and the preserve our neighborhoods as they exist. But that is true in just about every place I've ever been, especially any place that's going through change. So to develop the vision, what we did is we worked with a steering committee, and I just did my little seven-minute vision exercise, which is a great tool, which I'll. Tell you now, so if you ever need to use it, you just ask everybody in the room to come up with three words. That they want in their vision, and that list of words is on the left, and then from that you. Form a vision out of it, and it's never not worked, because you don't get into wordsmithing, which is the death nail of all vision statements. So there it is, you can read it if you want. I don't need to read it out to you. I think the thing that I like the most about the vision is the inclusivity and focusing on living wages. It says a lot that's super valuable. So let's talk about some economic insights that we had, so. One of the misperceptions about San Benito County, I think, is that people think that the economy is not particularly strong. For some reason, and I think you have a little bit of being too close to Silicon Valley. Itis. And you don't see yourself in the context of the entire state. And actually, in that context, this this first slide at the top. Shows GDP. For every county in California. And this is GDP per capita, and you can see that Santa Clara is second from the top, so very, very high. But San Benito County is in the top third. Which is really maybe surprising to some of you, but in terms of gross domestic product per resident, you're in the top third of the state of California. And then the next slide shows net employment growth by county from twenty ten to twenty twenty-one. And San Benito County is in the top ten percent in terms of employment growth in the county. Relative to other counties in California, so it's just kind of good to compare yourself. So that is that slide. So another slide. Or another thing that we came across that was this sort of concept that San Benito County has high levels of income inequality. And if you look at the chart on the right on the screen there, you see San Benito County. Santa Clara County, Monterey County, and California as a whole. And what's interesting about that chart is looking at the red, the red column. And so thirty-one percent of San Benito Counties earn between fifty and a hundred thousand dollars, and that's basically your middle class. So if you compare San Benito County to these other counties, you have a larger middle class. And a smaller proportion of low-income residents. And a pretty decent proportion of sort of upper-middle-class residents compared to these other counties. So I think the take-home lesson of this is that the income distribution in San Benito County is actually pretty equitable. Which is neat. And on top of that, you have low poverty, so only nine point three percent of households live in poverty compared to twelve percent in California as a whole. And your unemployment is down to four point eight percent, which is is also a nice change from the high in April of twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty. So our third economic insight, I think, is one of the most interesting one, and I'm sorry for the big, long table on the side, but. You can always take a look at it at your leisure later. So what this table is showing, whoops, sorry. I'm going the wrong way. There it is, who I got it. So one of the things we heard from a lot of people was that there are a lot of residents in San Benito County that are commuting north to be in the tech industry. And if we could only attract those tech jobs back to San Benito County, then we wouldn't have so many commuters and it'd help the economy grow. And it turns out it's pretty hard to find out exactly what jobs commuters have, because that data really isn't collected. So we did kind of a proxy for it. We looked at. What are the jobs that residents have? And compared it to what are the jobs that are in San Benito County? And so you could see if there's a mismatch, so in other words, if there's more residents. That have a job than there are jobs in San Benito County, those people are commuting out in that industry. Does that make sense? Okay, so what we found from that is that actually the people who are commuting out of San Benito County. Are teachers. Carpenters, plumbers, police, nurses. And retailers. So they are that middle-class population, and if you step back and think about it a minute, it makes a lot of sense, because these people can't afford to live where. In Silicon Valley, so they're living here and they're commuting. Additionally, their commuting times are a little bit off. Of the normal heavy commute, right? Because teachers can come home at three. And, you know, most carpenters start at seven in the morning. That's just what they do, especially when it's hot out. So kind of the take-home lesson of this is this begins to explain a little bit why you have such a solid middle class here, right? You have all these kind of middle-class people who are working in San Jose and Santa Clara County, but living down here, so that's your communal population. And so it kind of dispels this myth that if you attract high-tech, somehow that's gonna solve your road problem. It's not. Your road problem is a problem of road capacity. It's not a problem of. If you attract high-tech here, you'll just have more high-tech people living here, and they'll probably displace some of those middle-income people. And you don't have enough power to do that anyway, on top of everything else. So I do encourage you to take a look at this figure eight, because it does it does tell a really interesting story. And I think it's eliminating for kind of where to take the county in the future. Oops. Now it's not wanting to go to the next slide. So some other findings that we found, which of course you're probably aware of, or maybe not. San Benito County actually added residents. In the during the pandemic. While Santa Clara County lost fifty thousand residents and California as a whole lost half a million people. So those are pretty big numbers, right? And that's part of people moving out of urban areas. Into more rural areas because they can zoom now, right? So they have a different way of of working. You're a majority Latino community. Relatively few residents have earned a bachelor's degree. Your retail sales are growing faster and strengthening more than your neighboring counties, although they lag on a per capita basis. So what's that about? Kind of an interesting finding. I think it's two things that are happening at the same time. So one is you have larger families here, so the retail per capita is by definition lower, because you have more kids. And then the other thing that may be happening is due to transfers during the pandemic, cash transfers from the federal government made it so everybody could buy more stuff. In terms of your business sectors, the key ones probably not a surprise to you are gonna be manufacturing, agriculture, construction, healthcare, and public education. And I hate to say it, but your medium home price is still horribly high. Eight hundred and forty thousand dollars. For a median home. In San Benito County, that is pretty high, and these graphics just show some of those findings for you. This shows the retail sales per capita for California, Monterey County, and. San Benito County. Right here, here's the retail sales per capita, so you can see that San Benito County is a little bit lower than Monterey County and quite a bit lower than Santa Clara County. That's congruent with the higher incomes that you find in those other counties. Here's your housing snapshot, so the chart on the right there just shows those steadily increasing housing prices. Good thing you're not Santa Clara County, where the median home price is now over fourteen, one point four million dollars. Woo, that's expensive. So San Benito County is down in this pack with Monterey and California. We might be heading for another housing correction, hard to know. Right? Because people are hanging on to their homes because they bought them with low interest rates and they don't want to trade up, so that. Constrained supply, which means that prices keep going up. So this slide shows some of the goals, so part of the SEDS, we also have to cover goals. Should I stop and see if you guys have any questions about the economy? Maybe make this a little more interactive?
I mean, we can wait to the end to.
However, you want. We do have that data, yep. Ooh, at the top of my head, do you remember?
Go back.
Okay.
To the table.
Yeah.
That on the column, the far right. We estimate sixteen thousand seven hundred people commuting out. And that.
Twenty-seven thousand is the workforce, so it's it's almost sixty percent. Out. Yeah. We do have that in the report. I don't know that I could remember it.
I kind of do, but it's ten-year-old data. I don't think it's relevant at this point. You can, yeah.
A lot of people are going to Monterey, too. But but not as many, not as many. Are going north. Yeah. You just buy when you're up there. Right. Dan, you're saying that on TV when you're a planning commissioner. Yeah. No, I understand it, yeah. Yeah, it's that's called retail leakage. County commutes. Yep, out of county. Right. Yep. Especially because they have more options.
Percent of the workforce, not the county residents, yeah.
Yeah. Sure. Any other questions? You got a good brain trust here, you can like tap us if you want. Just something you're curious about, we might know the answer.
Actually, I actually do, now that we're talking about it, I know we were talking about there was Hollister that had their little power situation. And I think that might have been something that's being addressed on one of those bullet points in that staff report. Yep. Is there an estimation of time like when that will? Be completed, and obviously that doesn't impact us here in San Juan, right? I remember last time we we are okay with power, it's just a Hollister situation, right?
We'll we'll drill down and do that a little bit more, but I would not, I would. Disagree with that, that doesn't impact San Juan. It is at the Hollister substation, that is correct. But that substation drives the county's economy much more than the San Juan. Substation does, though it's a really big deal for the county's economy, and therefore it's a big deal for San Juan.
Oh, yeah, no, I I agree. Like I said, you were mentioning, we can't even. I'm not saying the answer is bring a bunch of tech companies, but if you were to bring another plant or something that does require power, we couldn't, just because we wouldn't be able to take care of that.
Right now, you can't bring a retailer. You can't bring anything right now.
Who's the other, was Amazon or someone else?
The some marijuana cultivators.
Yes.
I guess they call it cannabis now.
Yes.
Right. Yeah. All right, so part of the economic development strategy or the SEDS focuses on, we have to come up with goals and objectives, so these are the general goals and objectives of the of the. Economic development effort for the next five years. So one is to leverage the county's economic strengths. And there was a time in economic development where you tried to go after what you were missing. And that's kind of become unfashionable. And that makes sense, but instead hone in on what you're strong at, and then maybe leverage that so vertically integrate, so you have really good agricultural sector here, so vertical integration of that might be adding breweries. That where you're taking advantage of an economic strength that you already have that's local. So so that's that first bullet point, so grow the agricultural technology, energy, research, and aeronautic sector. Construct and maintain backbone infrastructure systems, as we've talked without PG, you really can't do economic development. Focus on value-added sectors of the economy. Value-added means you have a product, you're adding a lot of value to it, you sell it, usually that involves a lot of labor. And technology, and so that's what brings wealth into your community. And then trying to build synergisms between tourism, people who are coming here, and the other strengths of your economy, such as your agriculture, history, culture. And open space assets. And then the goal number two is expanding equitable community-wide prosperity, so this is around broadband and infill. Increasing the supply of housing, and I think we can all agree after COVID that affordable house childcare is more appreciated than it ever was before. And the third goal would be to support people, so not just businesses. So upskill digital and vocational skills of the workforce, support entrepreneurship, and help. County residents establish careers. And then the last goal is to increase economic resiliency. This is a new requirement, it says, they didn't use to require this, but now, given that we kind of all realize that our economies are more. Prone to shocks, whether it's from fires or floods or COVID or whatever. So that's goal number four. And then these are the initiatives, and I'm gonna turn it over to. My colleague here to talk about those.
Thank you, Marie. So in the SEDS report, you will find there's description of seventeen. Economic development initiatives, we've sorted them. In various categories, so. The first set, the first group grouping of initiatives are ones. That are either take place in unincorporated county or they're countywide, affecting the entire county. But we've organized in a way that like the first four. Are initiatives that. Are ongoing and can be. Move forward now, today. And there are. Lots of stuff going on with each one of these initiatives, so let me describe what they are. I I think we all know. The situation generally about the hospital, I I'll say for me, I follow it carefully. Not as much as people in this room that are involved in the meetings about it. But from the outside, I follow it carefully, and I happened to see the Benito link. I had a had a interview of Zoe Lauffer, and I don't fear saw that, it's like five minutes, that was the best. Summary I've heard of the whole situation, so it it goes from doom and gloom to maybe there's hope, and after hearing her talk, maybe there's hope. But anyway, it is a critical project initiative that affects residents. Who depend on the hospital for services, and it also is, what is it? Nine percent or eleven percent of the job base. It's a big deal. And the second one we kind of got into again is about the electrical power. Important to note, this is a bigger issue than just San Benito County, it's happening all over Northern California, even San Francisco itself. Which is such a surprise. So something has gone wrong at PG&E, it's a multi-billion dollar for-profit corporation. And is not able to deliver suddenly. The basic services is chartered to do. So it's a real problem, and it's. People working on it have to be, we kind of. Say, okay, well, here's what we need to do here. A. We need to be working with PG&E to try to solve it internally. Recognizing questions you you raised, I was saying was. Kind of what the status of it is. You hear different things from different people, you get different answers from different people in PG&E. So if anybody comes up with this answer, please let us all know.
We'll be on the lookout.
Yeah. So one track is to work with PG&E to solve the problem, the other track is to find alternative power sources. Through renewable energy, et cetera. These are in the infant stages, these are, nothing definitive has been uncovered yet. And it's a work in progress, a lot of these economic development initiatives are in fact, in work in progress. So. You can interrupt to ask questions about any one of these specific. Um, you can interrupt to ask questions about any one of these specific ones that you have before, you know, you forget your question.
But Monterey, for the the power situation, I'm I'm not sure how it works. Do we bring? Can we bring power from Monterey or anyone to help us supply that or demand? Or Moth pounding?
I I I don't know. I I'm not sure. I don't know.
Okay.
Uh, the to me, the answers are not there. They're not clear.
They're not clear.
That we don't have the answer. We got a big problem and no answers. But you know, we're getting, we're getting started on coming up with the answers. And they could be long term and difficult to accomplish. No, most likely costly. Now, uh, a big, big win in economic development is the new college campus, which is under construction and uh should be celebrated. Uh, and nurtured. As it goes along and the buildings go up. And the the thing opens up to students that live here.
Great.
Four corners, yeah. Um, and then there's a youth empowerment hub, which is. A really successful facility that he uh serves hard to um. Uh, in need to youth and it's based right now in downtown Hollister, but it serves the entire county. I imagine. There's. Youth from here that use that facility. Uh, and that's a ongoing initiative that uh could be nurtured today. They want to expand. Um, and there they 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 have a plan. So. That's an initiative that is right here ongoing. Now, there's three, the next three. Are gonna take a while. And there are no guarantees they are going to all move forward. One is uh the automotive research and testing facility on Highway one fifty six. I'm sure you've. Heard about that. It's a huge development is described. In the SEDS. Um. It's obviously backed by Silicon Valley Capital, but I will see. That they got a lot of um steps to take in order to make that a reality. A second one is a a commercial shopping center within the Santana Ranch subdivision. And that is not super far away, but they have a lot of unknowns that they have to go through as well. And the last one is at the Highway one oh one and Betabell Road. That one's been uh proposed. I'm sure you've heard about it. It's it's lots of publicity. Um, you may love it, you may hate it, but it's out there and um. It got approved by the county. And they got it. Uh, through all of their legal problems, so. The next steps are to raise the money. That they'll need to develop project, but that that's the state, the stage that they are in. Now it's been frozen. Ah, get the magic touch. Magic touch. It's great. And then long term, and this is out there is uh broadband internet access, not for. Necessarily for residents in the city limits here. But for the entire county, particularly in the rural areas that have no access to the internet. And that's a real. Barrier all through the state, all through the nation, in fact. And uh, there's a lot of money into this right now and a lot of energy and initiative into this for one um through Monterey uh. Monterey Economic Forum. I'm sure I forgot the name of the organization, the Regional Economic Development Organization. Yeah, yeah, um. They uh funded. Uh feasibility study. For San Benito County, which is ongoing. You all may have met with them. I don't know. Uh, so that's a process in place and plus. There are internet providers that want to build um fiber optic. Connecting San Juan Batista with Hollister privately. So these things are all kind of moving targets. They're. Complicated, they're uh require private funding, they're a network of private initiatives. And we're trying to pull all these together to make some sense out of them and make it. Uh, so that there's a good public service provided. And so that's an initiative that's gonna take a lot. Re- residents of the city, both cities in the county to work together and collaborate on to make it happen. Countywide tourism. Well, we have basically, I guess, uh, two tourist attractions, two significant tourist attractions in San Benito County. One is. The city of San Juan Batista, the mission. The historical district here, people come here, uh, they they uh. Stop here, uh, South Bay people stop here in San Juan Batista on their way to Monterey. And uh, so it's a significant attraction, but it's kind of. Right now, it's on its own. Then we have Pinnacles, which is another attraction. It's different. And. In between, there are numerous other. Possibilities to that could all be tied together. There's a need to establish. A countywide tourism initiative. There are. People, there are organizations that are trying to do just that. And um, that's a long term initiative underway and would encourage uh San Juan Baptistas to participate in that. Um. And then there's another autonomous vehicle innovation park that uh the I but we think I guess it dropped back down into the long term. When I we uncovered that the um. Property owner uh fired the CEO and. Um, who knows what's gonna happen for after that. Um, and then generally, you know, there's a lot of people, particularly around here with the outdoor um. Uh. Land trusts. That are that are at um. Uh, strongly supported in this particular area that wanna uh. You know, expand outdoor recreation and and this is actually something that's really important to the quality of life. You have a great outdoor environment, a great. Visual space, but you lack the activities. That make it uh that that people want to move here. So it's a ongoing piecemeal initiative. And then there's three in Hollister and three in San Juan Batista. Let me go directly to the San Juan Batista initiatives. One is um, and you, I'm sure you're totally aware of it, is the uh connection. Of wastewater treatment to the regional wastewater treatment plant. With the idea that the uh existing wastewater treatment plant will be mothballed. Uh, and uh you will have improved service. For for residents there. My understanding is you're moving line right along with that initiative and it's going well. And another one related is the clean drinking water as a whole. Uh, as you know, uh, effort to access this new clean drinking water source. It, the water quality is generally. I hope I say it right, poor from what I hear. Uh, in 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 the city could be better. I like that. Um, and so. Um, the this would improve it and I think it was mentioned that, hey, if we can do this, we can bring breweries. Into San Juan Batista, should you want breweries? Uh, should you allow them? So anyway, uh, that's a project. And then the last one is the city, as you know, have has applied. For a grant, state grant for a multi-mobile transportation project. And uh, that's on here. Perhaps there's some additional federal money that could be accessed. To make that work. I don't know the status of, but Brian is very uh, he's he's kind of the leader of this this initiative. Uh, I hope I said that right. Yeah. Yeah. And then. Yeah, not just one, absolutely. All these things are not just one person. That that's very important. Economic development is a team sport. It requires. Everybody and particularly in a county of this size. You have to work with the other entities in the county to make these things happen. Most of them. Cover the broader county. They're not really San Juan Batista specific. There are three also, as uh you might be aware of in Hollister itself, there's an. Ongoing effort to revitalize downtown. That's. Um. Money is going into that every year. And there are a whole in the organization in place to attract special events, attract visitors, et cetera. So that's just ongoing. Um, another is to build new hangars at the airport, but that's gonna require. Attracting investors and developers and I guess. Added to that is find the electrical power source. Um, even airplane hangars need electrical power. And then lastly, uh, there's an idea of building these, of taking advantage of the through the fence. Special status of the airport and build open space taxi runways to basically. Give more access to businesses to the runways themselves again. Uh, that kind of thing is had had headed right into the electrical power issue. So in a nutshell, that's our um. That's that's it. Oh, then I guess I'll go these last ones here if you could move that out of the way.
Uh, we can actually go back to that last slide.
Sure, yeah.
Um. I think Don, you can answer this question. I know he's in the in the. The the audience here. Um, improving internet access for all businesses between here, I'm assuming, and Hollister. I know we are trenching up. The one uh one fifty six. Are are we working on putting fiber? I think you talked about that. Uh, there was.
Right.
Something that you were working on to see if we could get all the cities aligned and to put fiber into that.
Right, um, we had actually designed uh a conduit for the uh the northern ground to Hollister's wastewater treatment plant. But Hollister has changed city council and city manager and has changed their mind on that. So um, we had to make a really hard decision earlier in June. To not go forward with that conduit and instead focus our energy on the one fifty six. Most recently, it's been decided that the imported surface water from the water district will actually be a city pipe and a city trench. Originally, it wasn't going to be. Um, they're still going to help us develop it and they're and they're cooperating with us, but the idea is is to get the water into the one fifty six before it's relinquished from by Caltrans. Because they have to deliver one fifty six paved and and ready to go. So we want to get our trenching and our conduit in into that, into that. Into that uh road before we uh receive it and accept it from Caltrans. And if I could just add one more thing. Are you familiar with three CE? Did you look at them at all, the community power uh uh initiative that that we're part of? And they actually buy power and they and they and then PG&E only delivers it.
Yeah.
So they and they have plenty of power. Well, hopefully the solar farms and other things that they've invested in haven't been developed yet, but but they're. The delivery of power and the ability to buy power are two different things in our community.
Yeah.
Because we rely on three CE to buy the power and they provided to PG&E's infrastructure. So it gets back to the infrastructure and substation and delivery. PG&E's ability to deliver the power that three CE buys for them. So I just wanted to make that clear.
Yeah, three CE is potential. You described it accurately. Three CE is potentially um. Part of the solution, but I'll say again. We're in the infancy of this problem. And there's no greed upon solution yet. Uh, among economic development um stakeholders that I'm aware of. Unless something's changed in the last few weeks, which I doubt.
And then I I just want to make a comment. I think the, I think we already know the multimodal. Um, I think is a fabulous idea. I think it'll tie in really nicely with the. Um, establish a countywide tourism initiative. I think it'd be great if we can get those tour company buses to come in and take people to Pinnacles, to take people to. Um, Hollister to go look at their stuff um and bounce back and forth. Um, which would be really great just to get people going throughout our county and and. Be able to see everything. So I think that would kill two birds with one stone almost. Um, so fabulous idea.
So so if you're uh wrap, have you wrapped up your?
No, no, almost.
Okay.
Almost. Um. I'll I'll finish with this and then Maria's gonna talk about the implementation. So. Those seventeen initiatives. Um. Are what's in the sets right now. A year from now. The sets will be updated. And. You will need to document the progress made or not made on each of these initiatives. In addition, some of them might go away. Uh, like perhaps the college, college may not be need anything by next year. It's uh walls are all up, they're ready to go. Um, but then some new ones, because as Don. Stated so well, just describing. The situation with the broadband. All of these, nearly all of these are moving targets. That's where we live at. These moving targets ends are changing. You have to make adjustments all the time. And that's what's gonna happen. Uh, this was happening. Between the time we wrote this draft report, the time and now. It's it's gonna continue to happen because that's the nature of the beast with economic development. Well. These, I won't go through all these, but you can read them yourself. These were also not. Necessarily our ideas. These were all um and all stated. And the many interviews that we did. By and as well as. We had two or three sets committee meetings when. I'd say there are about thirty people in these meetings, twenty to thirty. So we had a lot of participation and a lot of input into this, and these are just ideas. At this point. That aren't really moving forward because. One organization comes up with this idea, and as we said, economic development is a team sport and they haven't got the traction yet to. Put this into some kind of a broader initiative. So they're they're out there, it could happen, but they got a ways to go.
Yeah, and so one of the things we want to do in the SEDS is make it a big basket. Um, and put as many things in it as we can so that, you know, in year four, if some suddenly one of these lesser, not lesser, but. Um, one of these smaller initiatives gets some seed under it and someone wants to apply for grant, they can. So we don't want to like cut people out or off of it. And so with that in mind, I'd also just encourage you to think about any other initiatives in the community that you'd. Like to see added because we can still add them in this comment period. And we'd add them in this forum, like just a name of the initiative so that it's a placeholder. Um, for a later time, if you know, there's enough motivation to actually make something happen. Again, I want to emphasize that what the SEDS does is it's a ticket to play, but doesn't mean anybody goes to the game. Right? You've got to come to the game with your grant application. Get it all filled out and pull and you know, sent in and delivered uh before you can get the money. So um, this is just a. A ticket to play, as it were. Um. So uh, the EDC, I also want to emphasize is uh two lovely, intelligent, hardworking. Um, ha- uh, three quarter time people. It's so sort of like you in your planning department, only even smaller. And and so the reason I bring that up is again, as Steve said, this is a team sport. Um, their responsibility is really to help partners. So um, let you know when there are funding opportunities coming available. Um, give you some training, maybe on grant writing, maybe hook you up with someone who can help you write a letter. Um, and then they have some obligations with regard to EDA. So every year they have to. Put together a progress report to the Economic Development Administration about how much has been um completed on the SEDS. Um, and then they also are planning on working with all the regional partners to try and get um the SEDS projects implemented. But again, just want to emphasize it's uh two people who are working hard. And you know, they need their your help and they're there to support you, not to. So if something doesn't happen, don't blame them is what I'm trying to say. Because while all this is going on, they also do um engage in a day on a daily basis um in business retention and and um expansion efforts in the county. So they're working with the business community on an ongoing basis. And then they also um are working with like. Um, permitting issues and dealing with properties that are vacant and um need assistance. Um, so they have a wider variety of activities that they're engaged on beyond the sets. Um, and then there's a long resiliency plan in the document, um, which we won't go into, but there's a whole number of projects that have been identified. Um, and then there's a long resiliency plan in the document, um which we won't go into, but there's a whole number of projects that have been identified. Um, that are also eligible fu- for funding through E D A. And I will say that um E D A loves infrastructure projects like. They love that stuff. So if you have one. Write a grant, get some money, make it happen. Um, because it's kind of a no brainer for them, that part of it is. Um, and with that, I will stop sharing.
Yeah, yeah, I want I want to add one thing.
Oh, please.
Back to the uh.
Oh, did you want me to?
No, you're good. Back to the E D C. What is the role of the E D C? The E D C is not. The front line of economic development, although it's got the name, doesn't it? It really its role is we're we're working it through here is to um. Collect information like we've done on the Seds, what's really happening here with the economy. As with the initiatives that are in place. I don't think that's been written down before. Is to educate. Stakeholders such as yourself. About the status of these initiatives and about the status of the economy and so forth. It's coordinate between. City of San Juan Batista, the county, uh, the school district, whoever it needs, the. The tourist, the the county tur- the county. County Chamber of Commerce, whoever, whoever is the entities involved in various initiatives. And lastly, to follow up, to see if things are being done and so forth. So. It's a role, I think that in the past, the E D C has been looked at, but why didn't you bring a business yesterday to us? That's not the role of the the E D C cannot bring a business. It cannot help a business expand. And it cannot uh. Generate new entrepreneurs. That is done in partnership with local government, cities and the county. So unless they're in partnership in a in a direct way. Nothing, these things. Are. The E D C is not not the entity to look to work. So anyway, we are working through. Um, the implementation of the Seds, how it's going to proceed, what is the role of the E D C? I think there's been. A lot of confusion about this subject for many years. And it really would benefit everybody to have clarity. And also to recognize roles and responsibilities. Uh, so that collectively become effective.
So I I think that's great. That's 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 very good. Um, I like that description of the of the role. Uh, that E D C has, uh, because I think there is confusion. About, you know, when we work with businesses on the E D C A C. Uh, and recommend, you know, that and staff recommends that the E D C follow up with certain businesses, then we have an expectation. Regarding how that's going to occur. Uh, and so that's great. Well, um, and and I'd like to just emphasize in the staff report. Uh, the description of initiative seventeen has a different description in the staff report. Uh, than in the current Seds and so it might draft Seds and so. Uh, we collaborated collaborated a little bit on the description, uh, maybe not carefully enough. And so the staff report. Uh, spends a little bit more time uh to make sure that that's reflective of the actual. Content of the active transportation plan. The the other thing is that the the first draft has um. The multimodal center combined with the Third Street Master Plan. As a project, and I think that's it's important to recognize that. Third Street Master Plan is a project that has been on the city's books for two or three years now, I think. Um, and budgeted. Uh, so uh, as part of that plan, it's a five over five five hundred thousand dollar overall program. Together, so the city has obligated money for to spend on the Third Street Plan, so that. Probably should be referenced uh as indicated in the staff report. And then we also have some. Things going on uh at they're listed in the staff report. Uh, that um are eventually going to result in more employment. Uh, once we do planning for industrial areas and we do more infrastructure planning. Uh, we hope that that uh those initiatives through the community plan will generate more employment, local employment. Um, uh, along the lines described in the Seds or aligned with what's in the Seds in terms of the data. Uh, and there's also uh reference to uh and historical resources rehabilitation program, for example. Because we're so. Our our tourism base um is so dependent on the integrity of our historical resources. That you cannot separate the two. So in the staff report, we're recommending that that uh historic resources rehabilitation program. Be included as a project. Um, and I know that the consultant team had some some thoughts about how that might be represented in the sense. Uh, and and this list in particular, so we might want to hear a little bit about that. Um, uh, as well, so. Um, with that, that's just staff comments.
Yeah, we've had, we've talked about this and we'll integrate this stuff into the final report. And I'm gonna work with you to make sure you. Agree with the language.
Just to be fair, um, I was responding to a grant application that you sent me. To put in and we did it in like. Two hours to get it out as a draft by the deadline. So uh, but yeah, but that's why we have a draft so that we can make corrections.
Yeah, and in between the time that the initial interviews were conducted. And when the draft was uh prepared, we didn't have uh a multimodal center transportation plan. Concept fully fledged in the A T P.
Right.
So that's another example of, you know, sort of a moving.
Moving target.
Yeah, so.
And and one thing I also, um, what I found working with E D A a little bit is um. Having broad descriptions is good. Um, so for example, in the city of Port Bragg, we had redeveloped the mill site. Which is a three hundred and fifty acre half third of the town. Or former lumber mill. Well, just so happens that our wastewater treatment plant is on the mill site and we didn't have wastewater treatment plant in our Seds. But it's part of the mill site, so we got five million dollars to waste water treatment plant. So sometimes having a big description is not a bad thing.
Um, I guess I'll open it up. Yeah, any additional questions?
Any questions?
I do, actually. I'm a guy with all the questions. You wanna go? And and the public, yeah. You guys wanna? Alright, cool. Um, I I do have a question. Um. When it comes to uh two things here in town, I I'm looking at obviously. A small town. Is there anything else that you would recommend for? Job growth or improving that retail? You know, where our residents are spending money here um and not. Out there in another county. Um, I do understand that driving out there, you know, me personally myself, I'll shop at Whole Foods and then come here. Because we don't have one. So how do we, how how do we look at things like that? I know I saw the multimodal and the water project. Um, but you know, when I was comparing it to Hollister, they're obviously much bigger. They had a bigger list of cool things to help them. Um, you know. Fix the county. Um, is there anything else that we can add such as those things to help us improve um here in San Juan?
I wanna, I I I want to answer it this way because um. You know, um, we could come up with some outrageous ideas that would be rejected easily. But what I think uh, well, here's my observation of what is happening with. Small towns and big cities for all places like um. San Juan, like Third Street, for example. Is. In the past, the effort's been focused on what's good for business. How do we make the business more successful? Today is flipping. So what's good for people? How is it? How do we make this place? A place that people want to go to. And I'll give you an example. You may like it, you may not like it, but Hardin's. Um, back in the day, it was a fantastic place for people. You go there. They have Spanish classical music. It's popping. It's got a great outdoor setting. You think about that, and they still have a lot of that. So you think about that. And what makes that place successful and apply it to Third Street? With some good design help. You might come up with some really innovative solutions that would. Set San Juan Batista on the map. It wouldn't be necessarily what drivers want. Or what the cars want. Or what some businesses want. So you're gonna have to face controversy to make change, but that's. I was leaving it at that for now.
Thank you. You might have. So that's insightful.
Yeah, I I think what Steve's talking about is known as placemaking. And that's actually a term of art, so if you look it up on Google, you can read a lot about it. Um, and I think that is a. A part of what you can do here. You actually have a great place. And I'm actually impressed by how many of your storefronts are still occupied. Um, try walking around in downtown San Francisco right now. It's not occupied. It's a real bad example, but it's a real example and and it just gets to this issue of. Um, you know, offices don't have people in them anymore. You know, kids today graduating from high school are working out of their homes. I'm just flummoxed by this. I wasn't allowed to work out of my home until I was fifty five. Um, and that's changing downtown's a lot. And so like a little bit, you should congratulate yourselves. Because your downtown is doing pretty okay, really comparative to many that I've looked at and seen. Um, and probably that you have looked at and seen. Um, but yes, street scape stuff is good. Um, take a look at your zoning ordinance. Are you keeping things out that you want to have in? I think a lot of times unless you consciously take a look at that zoning ordinance and really think about it. Sometimes there's just legacy stuff in there and you're like, well, why don't we want that in our downtown?
Oh, yeah.
Uh, you know, and so just take a look at that. Um, do you want to bring more residences downtown? What kind of density do you allow in terms of mixed use? I mean, I think all of that should be part of the conversation. Um, and another piece to this, I think, is moving away from parking friendly. Um, and actually. Not making parking the main point of downtowns, because when you do that, downtowns become unwalkable. And they're less um inviting as an experience. And most people today are shopping their boring stuff on the internet. And when they go to shop in person, they're shopping for an experience. Which is the whole kit and caboodle. I probably haven't told you anything you didn't know. But sometimes it helps to have pay somebody from outside to tell you stuff.
Thank you. That's that's a great way to put things. Um, any other questions from our commissioners?
Uh, you mentioned uh earlier that there would be opportunities to add suggestions for initiatives, I think referred to the mess. Is now such an opportunity or how do we do that?
Absolutely. If you let us know what it is and then we can follow up to get details.
Well, I've just made some notes, so why don't I rattle them off and then you can.
And and actually just to follow up on that, you're you're, this is an action item. And so uh if there are initiatives that you feel should be added, that you want to recommend city council. Because city council will be a formal action to um, you know, approve the. The Seds on behalf of San Juan Batista. Uh, and so your thoughts will be forwarded to the city council.
Okay, I think that the. The two primary things um I wanted to bring up. Impact San would impact San Juan Batista greatly, but. Um, would be officially or technically rather um county projects. The first is I saw on one of those lesser initiatives, the the boxes of performing arts venue. As some people in this room know, um, since the nineties, I've been. Pitching a concept of an outdoor performing arts venue just south of town here, an old abandoned cement plant. And at one point, I had a lot of traction on that from an outfit called Bill Graham Presents in San Francisco. They came down and looked at it and um it's got a lot of possibilities. And I liked that idea for this, and I spoke with the landowner at that time, Charles Davidson, and he was um all in favor of it. So I think it's got some. Some big possibilities. And the reason I like that for this town. Is somewhere to the mountain winery in Saratoga or Montalvo or some of these other high ends. Venues, people come from all over, spend a lot of money here, and then they go home. We don't have to build houses for them or teach their school their kids or do a lot of other stuff. So how can we maximize revenues in this town? Without having the attendant costs that usually go along with those things. So I thought that'd be a good moneymaker. Um, and I just wrote a note here um as a reference to Santa Barbara County Bowl. Beautiful, great venue. And you know, ticket prices, James Taylor, hundred forty bucks a ticket or something. And people come from all over, like I said, to somebody, the the mountain winery. Check the ticket prices and the uh ancillary benefit to the city of Saratoga, Big Basin Way sometime, and you'll see that. That rising tide floats a lot of boats. Um, secondly. Um, I was, I I I was listening with some interest when um you mentioned the two tourist attractions in this county are the Mission, which we agree. And the Pinnacles, I also agreed. But one thing you left out, which is I think a huge problem, I think Commissioner Korea will jump on this bandwagon a little bit. And that is our wine making region. It's very, very few people know. That we have some of the most storied famous winemakers in the world. Uh, one of them just left us unfortunately, Josh Jensen, he founded Clara a long, long time ago. And uh, we have one here in San Juan now, uh, south of San Juan on the road to the to retreat, Randall Graham. Randall Graham and Josh Jensen are just. They, those two and the guy Gary Pizzoni in San Alisea, they're considered to be the fathers of Pinot Noir. I mean, these guys are on the cover of Wine Spectator magazine. What are we as a town with Randall and Populashon, his project, it's his legacy project. He searched all over California. To create to create what he calls a legacy project, that he wants to leave the earth feeling good that he created, and he chose here. I was looking at his vineyard yesterday, Tony. It's, have you seen it lately? It's beautiful, isn't it? It's really doing well. And he's creating great varieties that have never existed before. He's doing things that. Are really gonna draw people from all over the world to see what he's doing. What are we doing to support that? Um, as far as a county goes, I know there's a pretty significant effort underway right now. With Mayor Casey of Hollister. And a couple of other business leaders I've been hearing about. I'm looking for the meeting with them hopefully, and I hope Tony will go with me. Where they're really starting to take up in earnest this thing I've been preaching about for years, which is this wine trail idea. And Ted Davis at Technova apparently wants to build a boutique hotel on the Wayne Trail. Have you heard of this? Yeah, he's got the money to do it. He wants to be builder developer. But just to end to really. Foster and encourage and build up. San Benito County wine making. I mean, you talk about an underappreciated unrealized asset for this community. If I said to any of you, tell me the tourist attraction Paso Robles, what would you say? And Paso's been able to create that out of nothing over a relatively short amount of time. So much so that Scott Fuller from San Juan looks and I went down there and to met with the Paso Wine Alliance and said, how did you guys do this so quickly? The answer Jerry Lor. J J Lor, uh, that guy was like a mover and shaker. He said, come on, everybody, let's do this. Everyone followed. And now the Paso Wine Alliance, I think they have like a twenty million dollar budget. They have an office with twenty full-time people. Wine in Paso is a big deal. And it has spawned restaurants and shopping, their little town squares cute as heck, and overnight accommodations, their T O T taxes through the roof as a result. I mean, it is a boom boom for for that community. Well, we're closer to the Bay Area than they are to L A. And that's their market, by the way, they pull from L A. How's, how how much does it make sense for Bay Area people, San Jose, Silicon Valley, a million people up there with. Untold spending power to day trip down here or come down here and spend the night. Go to some wineries, go to some shops. I it it just seems like the natural, and I don't know why it hasn't been taken advantage of. It sounds like maybe now something is being done, but. Of all the other stuff that you have on there, all all great, great ideas. Wine in San Benito County, mark my words, that could be the thing that really makes us a lot of money.
We agree with everything you said. And uh, we've heard it from various people and it's on, it's on the uh, on the list. Performing Arts Center. And the Wine Trail Tour, the Root Wine Trail. Both both are great ideas that just haven't yet. Caught enough traction to get to a point where in the next year, you're gonna be looking for funding for. Uh, buy from the federal government. Where you'll need very specific, uh, data.
As far as the, the wine stuff goes, I think you better ask Mayor Casey how much traction it has. Cause like I said, my understanding is it's got getting a lot of traction currently.
Yeah.
And as far as that goes, I would love nothing more. And Tony and I and his wife have talked about this at length. If San Juan Batista could brand itself as the gateway to the wine country, San Benito wine country and the gateway to the Pinnacles.
Yeah.
And sorry to the Hollister people, but I wanted, I want us to be that versus them. And I'll tell you, not just because parochial reasons, but also because I think it's a better experience getting off one-on-one, coming through San Juan, turning right on Union Road than it is coming down twenty-five. Going into Hollister off of twenty-five isn't what anyone would call scenic. But coming through Little San Juan, stop at Hardin's, like you said, we could have a wine country visitor center to give people maps. Here's, here's where you go, here's what you do. Um, I think we could really take advantage of that as a city of San Juan and leverage that. So those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Thanks Dan for quite, uh, prolific discussion on wine. But that's been my thing here and I'm, I'm a consultant in the wine business. And since we moved down here, we've had a lot of our clients, uh, big wine people from Napa and Paso Robles. Going back and forth, Santa Barbara, Sonoma, et cetera, et cetera. And folks come here and they often stop. Have lunch at one of the two or three places where you can have lunch in this beautiful little village. And the question always comes up is, why don't you have a wine visitor center here? Why aren't there any wine tasting rooms downtown? It's, it's mind-boggling when you think of all those things, you know, like Josh Jensen, an absolute legend. And Randall Graham's Papaluchum. I've been out there lately with a number of, uh, folks, pretty high-powered folks, one of them's coming for lunch here tomorrow. Absolutely blown away by what Randall Graham is doing up there. There's nothing in the world like what Randall Graham is doing at Papaluchum today. And you talk about a spot for a venue for events up there. Randall's done a couple dinners up there that, and I've done wine dinners all over the world. And the dinners we've had up at Randall's are as good as anything, anywhere. And the, those opportunities are just lying out there. It's such a beautiful drive. You have people who come down here just to drive their sporty cars down Sienna Garove and now through the Pisces and et cetera, et cetera. And, and then you have the hook of all those wineries out there. I just, I, I hope we can get something done in the next couple of years. You know, I only got a couple left in my old body. But, uh, I just, uh, I, I really wanna make that a focus as we go forward here.
Beautiful comment. Thank you.
I guess I supposed to go next.
Hey David.
Uh, I'd like to anyway. But the, some of the things that I heard from the very beginning was, was basically land use. When it comes to opportunities for ec- economic development, would not be a nice trend to go into. As far as economic, economic development, uh, when we're using our, our land for that type of development rather than to build homes. You know, kind of a thing, looking at the opportunities there. Um, and, and what's going to serve that is the activities. That was also brought to our attention today, that, that's important for us to think about. Uh, so specifically on my part, I was thinking of the cement plant area as well. Uh, the infrastructure that we need to look at when it comes to any kind of activity hasn't come through. And we know that our infrastructure needs to be worked on, uh, continuously to maintain and make us sustainable as an economic developed area. And I, I think that one of the places on the three initiatives for San Juan Batista, which is fought fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, um, just on a cement plant property. That area can help us control some of the flooding that we have here in, in our area. And, uh, the San Juan Canyon is another opportunity, I think, for activities. And, and the Anza Trail for activities. And I think there are some historical value as we develop these areas for economically. Because of the fact that there are, are places on the old cement plant property that can be utilized. Uh, if we think about bowls or of places for, to have functions and stuff like that. There, there, there are things over the years have, that have been buried in the San Juan Canyon. It needs to be uncovered because of the historical value. That was important back to, for us histor- uh, historically in the past. That can be revitalized for today's activities. And, and, and that would be like the Spring Spot area, which was a picnic area at the base of the Anza Trail. And also the base of San Juan Canyon. And not to forget the fact that we have a Fremont Peak Park and the state park here as well. That needs, uh, to bring people in. What are some of the things that we can do there for activities when that goes? So I think there's a lot of opportunities here. That I think if we think outside of the envelope, we might come up with some real good things. But I think the most important thing is probably infrastructure. To make sure that we have the roads and we have the, uh, everything under control where we won't have the flooding and stuff like that. Where people, when they come here, it's so enjoyable and safe. You just wanna keep coming back. But I think the environment, when it comes to land use, economically, what can we do with that land? In the canyon area, in the cement plant area, even on the Salinas grave, which needs a lot of work in that area. Where we, where it can bring more people in. Those are some of my thoughts, just for today. Thank you.
Any other comments? Um, I think I have one comment, no, my question, um, I really like Dan. Uh, David, uh, David, um, comment. Um, I, I'm gonna just piggyback off of that, that, um, there is, I think, a cool need for some type of, I know, a building. I know we have our commu- I think it's our community center right in town. Um, and the only reason I bring this up was recently I've been hosting a couple of events. And I've been struggling to find a venue that can host, uh, more than a hundred people at one given time. I think we have Casa Maria, but that belongs to the church, um, obviously our community center, um, and then the retreat. And also Kurt's barn, which he sometimes opens up for, for certain guests. Um, uh, which is really nice, but going off of what David was saying. It would be nice to actually have a venue of some sort, not just our community center. I know we're working on it, but I'm, I'm gonna be honest and it might break someone's heart, but it's not sexy. And, um, I would like to see a barn or something where we can host some, have, um, a lot of events. We can rent it out and it would invite, um, people from the Bay Area to host a retreat. Um, to do something and bring some revenue in town where these people would spend the night. And then maybe that would lead into, um, accommodations. Maybe we need another hotel that's like, we're saying a boutique hotel. I know we have some in town. Um, but I've heard during, um, ma- like major festivals and stuff like that, that those hotels book up. And there's nowhere for places, there's, there's no place to stay. They have to go Hollister or somewhere far. Um, just to, to attend or, um, be a part of our festival. So it'd be nice to see some type of, um, community center that's nicer where people just wanna come and host these bigger retreats, whether it's corporate or, um, uh, you know, wedding of some sort. Um, I think it would be really nice to see, uh, so like some type of ranch almost. So that's all I got.
Um, moving over, yeah. May I just add one footnote to my thing about the, uh, the, the Pinnacles? I was just trying to look on my phone. I don't know if it's Soladad or Gonzalez, but one of those little Salinas Valley towns. Allocated, I wanna say two hundred, their council allocated two hundred thousand dollars to rebrand themselves as the gateway to Pinnacles National Park.
Did they really?
Yeah.
Be Soladad, cause, uh,
Is it Soladad?
That's where the gateway is, yeah.
It's Soladad. Soladad's doing that. Well, we're a heck of a lot closer to Pinnacles if you're coming from Silicon Valley than Soladad. So what is this county? What's this community? What's San Juan Batista? What's San Benito County doing? Similarly, gateways to the, the, the country's newest national park. With the visitor center with this, with that, you, you, you see what I'm saying? If Soladad can see value and merit in that, why can't we?
I would only, um, say based on what I've learned and I've not been involved in this at all. Is, um, there is an ongoing dialogue between, um, San Benito County uh, stakeholders and Pinnacles National Park staff. Uh, and there's an ongoing effort to try to integrate people that are going to Pinnacles on the Hollister side. Into make it more, uh, inclusive with the communities and residential areas along the way. So, um, uh, and I know when I went, my wife and I went and hike. I'm telling you, uh, full reveal. We hiked Pinnacles, the whole thing, eleven miles. We started from Soladad. And at that time was, what, a year and a half ago, there was zero in my, in Soladad. You mean, we know Pinnacles existed. And whereas in Hollister, they were branding it, making it part of their brand. So something has changed. And like we said, there's a moving targets. Uh, but there is an ongoing effort here and that's actually one of the initiatives. That's important to closely follow. It's not, we're not at ground zero. We're at some media, um, midterm stage. Let's put it that way. In there. I would recommend, encourage you to get involved. I would encourage you to get involved and I can give you names of people that are involved with it. Yeah.
And just a, a point of interest, um, there are several gateways to Yosemite. And they all claim to be like a gateway to Yosemite. And they're all valid, so.
Exactly right.
Um, all right. So with that, uh, with all our comments here, I'm gonna go ahead and open this up to public comments. Um, is there any comments in chambers? Please step up to the podium and welcome.
Welcome. Yes. Thank you very much. I'm Darlene Boyd. Um, since you just talked about Pinnacles, I, National Park, I am on their steering committee. For what you just talked about, I have met the people from Soladad. And, um, they have a meeting coming up Monday. I can't be at it, but I am going to send my husband. So he will be at it. However, um, I'm keeping in touch with it. And another thing about that particular project, if you wanna call it that, is there a Greg Kaufman that they want to make their executive director for the Pinnacles National Gateway partnership, the new one that, that they're forming, um. He's also the director of the Welcome Center in Salinas, California. I know that Dawn knows him. Um, he's wants to be their, their executive director. And he is, has brought down the Masters of Urban Design students from Berkeley. UC Berkeley to do all kinds of designs of how to bring tourism to this tri-county region. Two of those really focus on the San Juan Batista and, um, San Benito areas. And one, and one of his some, is the Deanza Trail and historical sites. That has to do with the Deanza Trail. Another one has to do with the novels of Steinbeck. And they chose a novel of Steinbeck for each county area. And, um, they sort of chose the Grapes of Wrath for San Juan Batista. And that's one of their ideas, but there are, um, they're at the point of publishing these ideas. And once I get those copies, I will be sending them out to the planning commission. I'd like to stay in touch with you people. And so, um, I wanted you to know, know about that. So that really is kind of moving forward a lot. The Pinnacles, um, Gateway Partnership. Um, as for the wineries and breweries, I know that Murphy's California is another place that is big on wineries. What we really need here, if we're gonna have wineries and breweries, because we want people to stay, we don't want them driving and degraded. We need some hotels in town and we can really put that in our commercial industrial zone. You know, or someplace like that boutique hotels would be really kinda nice too. And yes, I would like to see, um, our downtown be more paved. We can actually put some entertainment right downtown. If we paid those four blocks of downtown, make it pedestrian only. And we'll, you know, we can mitigate the parking issues. There are ways to do that and I have lots of ideas. Um, we should be able to, um, have more of a, what you mentioned. And I've been doing a lot of reading on this, is what's good for people. Place making and destinations for people to really want to come here. You know, because we aren't quite a destination yet, but we're on that cusp of becoming one. Um, I've also done a lot of research in vacancy and blight remediation. I've given, I don't know if I've given it to the planning commission, but I have given it to some of the city council members. Stuff about, um, and I know I gave it to Dawn about, um, how to remediate blight. I even talked to Stacy, what's her last name? That was our, oh, Bristo, yes, on how to approach blight remediation with empty storefronts, those kind of things, the whole process. Um, so we've got that going. I also would like to say, you know, I think that, um, we need things for our luck park because that's for, for our local citizens, that's a good community center. If we make Luck Park sort of a community center hub. Sort of like the Epic Center where you have your nonprofits all housed in one place. Working along with library, working with the historical association, working with the Rotary, working with the there's the senior center, you know, we can put a lot of that stuff right there and they can synergize together. So I kinda like that idea. Um, we are, I think we're getting ready to work on a really strong downtown specific plan. Um, that's important to me. And I think a couple of staff members that I'd like to see in our city are grants management and an economic development staff member, because you know, and that could again be one of your double, double jobs. Um, because, you know, reaching out for grants is one thing, but managing them is quite another thing. And, and it takes, you know, we need some professionals for this. We can't keep relying on volunteers to do all these things. And no, that is not Brian's job. An economic development staff person is a person who's going to do a lot like what Renee does except for the city. You know, and also maybe added things of attracting businesses here to the locations that we decide that we want and to the kinds of businesses we decide we want. Because I think it's going to be very important to decide which businesses do we really want here. Um, so I also want to mention that, you know, planning and implementation are like the proverbial horse and buggy. You can't have one without the other. So having grants for planning is doing economic development. And this city really needs to have consultants and grants to be able to do planning for a lot of the kinds of things that we want to do because we are working with mostly volunteers. You cannot expect volunteers to know all this stuff or have those skill sets. And so, and when I went to the Cal Ed conference last week, that's what they put together. Planning and then implementation. You can't really do implementation without a plan. Because you don't know what you're doing. How do you know which grants to go for if you don't have a plan? Um, another thing that I think would be good for this area. And this could be a county thing is regenerative farming. We should be a whole sector for regenerative farming. We're a rural county. We do farming here. Even with the grapes and I'm sure Randall Graham is one of the best regenerative farmers around. Um, so, and then, um, Greg Kaufman again from the Welcome Center, he really wants to make this a historical and eco-farm tourism area too. And that's one of the things that he's kinda working on and he's working on it on a tri-county regional level. So I'm, you know, gonna push that, but I'm also gonna push, you know, let's, let's get in there and have grants for planning as well as implementation because you can't really implement without planning. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else from chambers that would like?
I went to this presentation caught, I think about the last forty-five minutes a week ago, cuz I was stuck in traffic. So uh, one of the things that I wanna say, I appreciate what Dan was saying about Clara Wine. And just a little detail, Steve Dorner, who was the master winemaker for their infamous Pinot Noir, was my college roommate. And he's only had two jobs in his life, at Clara for fourteen years, and now he's in Oregon. And this guy is brilliant. But anyway, I, one of my off-seasons from college, I got to bottle one of the first uh, years of that Pinot Noir. So, yeah, it's, it's an area of economic, and it's also ag business that we're really missing out on. Um, the other thing, I like the fact that we might wanna swoop down on being the gateway to Pinnacles from the south end. Uh, we have the beautiful uh, surrounding mission, we have everything that goes along with that. The other thing I wa- I failed to see, I, I don't know, maybe you're just not in tune, the two consultants. You missed the mark for me, because we are home to a world-known American playwright, Luis Valdez. Luis Valdez is eighty-three years old. And I feel like that Teatro Campesino, that man is an icon. He was presented with one of the Presidential Medal of Honors, needs to be somewhere in that plan. Because we can do a lot more uh, to bring more tourism in. You know, he's, he's eighty-three, I know he has three sons, I don't know if they're in the business. I do know that they take their Teatro Campesino troupe worldwide, they were in Europe a lot. Um, they don't do a lot locally, and I've kinda wondered why. Maybe because he's eighty-three and doesn't have anyone that's taking over. The other thing is that they got sort of shut out of our mission. I don't know really what's going on with the mission, don't know if any of the planning commissioners know, but. It was a big draw every Christmas season, they would do their um, Christmas play. And that was shut down, I don't know if it was COVID. Maybe there's a few factors, I don't know, but that's something that we really need to bring back. And I'm a local, so I grew up here. So I caution you all to be very cautious about bringing in grad students from Berkeley. To tell us what their ideas of what's good for us. We went down that route before with planning students that came up with our general plan. Personally, I feel that our resources are our local people, people like you all sitting here, they're volunteering. Myself, people in the audience, people that are the silent majority that don't come to the meetings, that may have a good idea. We just have to employ other ways to get them engaged. We did one time, we were like the pre-rodeo show to the big California rodeo. It was San Juan Fiesta Days. Yeah, so you know, we don't have the rodeo ground anymore, but maybe we could have Fiesta Days, I don't know. There's just a lot of other things I see, particular to San Juan Batista, without bringing in outside. Things that don't fit us, okay? I, I think that if we can revive a better, shinier version of what we used to be. And really, uh, I like Dan's idea about the cement plant, my dad worked there for years. When that closed down, it took a lot of businesses away, so we have to rethink. I see this downtown as having more eateries, whatever they may be, not fond of trinket shops. I think people like to eat, people like good drink, ale, wine, whatever, desserts. So I feel like that might be some kind of way to being businesses, don't think we're ever gonna be. You know, people are gonna shop for their uh, sundries downtown, like I used to when I was a kid, there was a hardware store, there was a drugstore, there was. Lots of things, because we have the cement plant. We're no longer that in that era, so we have to rethink. But we have wonderful assets here, and I would really like to see you pull in, the, the Campesino. The Art Performing Center, I mean, they're already here. Um, and just, you know, the Wine Trail, the gateway to National Pinnacle Park. And also caution Larry Tales about going to outside grad student uh, thesis projects, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Please.
Okay, just to add a little bit more, um. I'm, I know that Ms. Morse Lopez wants to be cautionary about grad students things. But you know, we get to do the picking and choosing. So I don't worry about that so much, I'm willing to look at all kinds of ideas. And then pick and choose what we want for our community. But as far as the mission went, the reason that they can't do the plays there anymore for El Teatro. Is because some tourists stood on one of the benches and it tipped over. And so now they have bolted, because they used to move the benches around to do the plays, they have bolted all the benches down. So it can't be used for that, however, we, it still could be used for the Cabrio College. Music Festival that they used to have, and I haven't seen that because of COVID. But I would keep in touch with Cabrio College, they used to do one of their finale, final um. And this is for classical music, modern classical music, and that was a big draw here too. So it that's something that we can really look at, but yes, making this place a destination is going to be fun.
So I, I have a comment on that, so going back to all this, which it sounds like, do, can we add something that just looks at arts in general? I know we do have an art gallery here in town, I don't know what it attracts, but perhaps that all gets tied into an art. Luna, I think it's Luna Art Gallery, that, yeah. Um, here in downtown next to the little shop. It's actually really nice, I've, I've walked it. Yeah, so it's.
So, so what I, what, if I could answer really quick?
Yeah.
So um, one of the things to keep in mind is EDA does do planning grants. And just from talking to you today, it sounds like there's a really good planning grant opportunity here. That's something around performing arts, wine, Pinnacles, Gateway. Legacy um, theatrical company.
Yeah.
Um, legacy wine thing. And I'm not exactly sure how that would all come together, but um, and. You know, just to be clear, you can use a planning grant to pay for your own staff to spend time doing something. You don't always have to hire a consultant. Um, you can even use it to hire local people to work on it as well, so it could be a more home, homegrown. Thing if you wanna do it that way. Um, the planning grants are pretty easy to get, there's not a lot of reporting that's associated with them. So uh, you know, in my experience, um, CDVG is another place you can get really good economic development planning grants, if you haven't tried that. Um, usually they're, you know, thirty-five to eighty thousand dollars. And you don't have to pay them back, it's just free money, and at the end you just have to have some report that you submit. Um, so I just offer that as a way of trying to. Like, there's a lot of really interesting ideas in here. I feel like it's a little more out of our scope to crystallize that for you. But I think it's a super opportunity for a planning grant, so that you guys can crystallize that on your own. I'm sorry. Um, so EDA has planning grants. And then CDVG has economic development planning grants that are really easy to apply for, I mean, the application's like four pages, it takes you two hours to write it. Yeah. And you probably get it, cuz it's like a good compelling story.
Okay, Dan. Okay, Dan, I wanna let you know that the person that has the Luna Gallery is the same person that had the Galleria Tonantine. Yes.
Yeah, and art, you know, art and nature are really part of revitalizing downtown, so I mean, those. You know, in the old days, it used to be shopping, but people aren't really buying stuff. Except for online anymore, so they're looking for experiences, and that's where you tie that in.
Yeah, no, I.
You guys, you guys are all on the right page, I would say, very much so.
Well, it's in our DNA, you know, the, they call this, they called it the Mission of Music, of all the missions in the chain. So for two hundred years, this town has been about art and music and performances and all that stuff. And you know, uh, Councilwoman Lopez said, this Luis Valdez guy. Is up there with Randall Graham, is what Randall is to wine, Luis is to performing arts. Did you know, for example, that he gave the keynote address when Assemblyman Rivas? Was sworn in as California's Speaker of the House? Luis, our little Luis Valdez there, the not, at the California Capitol, giving the keynote address. Pelosi was there, every, Newsom was there, everybody was there. And here's our Luis Valdez, giving the keynote address. Let me ask a rhetorical question, what has this city done to leverage that asset? You talk about undervalued. Nothing, that's like zero. What could we do to support him and really? Well, we, I mean, I hate to be crass, but we can make a lot of money off of his reputation and the, and the theater group and all of that stuff. If we just would figure out ways to promote that and support it and really highlight it, emphasize it, I think.
Agreed. Right, so any other comments from the public? No, alright, seeing that there. I actually see zero attendees.
Yeah, we, we're not sure about Zoom or Zoom connection, actually, so uh, we've heard from people that. There, there, it may not be. We're gonna have to adjourn and see what that is before we do the next item.
Okay. Yeah, that's, that's definitely fine.
It's being recorded, so.
That's good, then we can share it on Facebook or wherever it needs to go.
Right.
Okay, great. Okay, yeah, and we have the right meeting idea, maybe we're doing a long meeting. Alright, we'll, we'll take a look, okay. So um, with no comments being on Zoom, um, I guess we'll move on to the next portion, which is uh, making an action. But seeing that we have um, made a request to, to get some more information from our um. Uh, our consultants. Brian, are we to?
Yeah, I think that the, given the timeframes involved here, um, and I'm being sensitive to what EDC needs to have accomplished. It would make sense to um, recommend that the city council. Um, approve the SEDS program the way it's presented with the suggestions. You know, recommendations for the city council to evaluate as part of that, you know, their review. Exactly, right, so there's been a lot said this evening. Um, and then on the eighteenth, we would bring um, your recommendations. Uh, for what should be included or referenced in the SEDS. Um, and uh, to the city council. You do.
Well, I'll second that. Um, so I, uh, Clark, can I please get a roll call?
Commissioner Korea?
Yes.
Commissioner DeBree?
Yes.
Commissioner Maderos?
Yes.
Chair Aranda?
Yes.
Alright, so um, moving on, oh, well, I guess we're gonna, we're gonna adjourn, um. Yeah, we're gonna adjourn for, we'll do a five-minute breather and uh.
Not adjourn.
Yeah.
Yeah.
A break, we will take a five-minute break and be right back.